Alright.
Alright, we got everybody here tonight, so that's good. Regular agenda, okay, so I know we're gonna remove the executive section.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if we could remove those buildings and add a NC to the purchase agreement.
Which one, 10C?
Please.
Okay.
Alright.
Any other changes?
I could, I guess I do have a question on consent agenda, do you want me to do that here with consent agenda?
Wait till we get to consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular agenda, please.
Make some motion, Sarah, there's a second, okay, with the change, with the said change.
With the said changes.
Yep. Yep. Okay. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, okay, consent agenda, Jeff, you had a question on that?
Um, looks like we had a couple of tractor parts in there, did the tractor actually break down in, was it April?
Items.
Let me go open it here. Sorry, yes, it did?
Are you talking in vendor invoices? Where?
Yeah, even, you're right, in vendor.
In vendor invoices, okay.
There wasn't shear pins that busted first, it took out all that? We don't have shear pins on that to protect it? Wow.
Yeah.
Good to know. So that's why you asked about a second door, got it?
I don't think it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you just get enough to fix it now, or did you get extra?
It's not a part of a game on him, but it's something I think it looked into. I believe they just have one to fix, you know? Except, uh, they switched it.
Second floor for the school. The amount of roads are supposed to be, we're now finding clear, and then there's this that will be added, that's for another conference.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just surprised it came in your file, that's all, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions on the consent agenda?
Um, I do, so, I was just looking at an email we got. So there's a, one was removed and one was added, lift station SA fourteen. Is that attached to the email, or where, where is that at again, or what is that? It's just, uh.
That's, that's the last pass, the final panel or the permanent panel has been added, and it's all started, or installed in the, I'm sorry, but the. I think it's a goal.
Okay. And then. Was four, four G was just, the number was changed, or it says progressive estimate number three was changed to progressive estimate number four, was it just a, a recording? Okay, recording, whatever, okay. Okay. Those are my questions.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna look for a motion to accept the consent agenda as is.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
He has a second, alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Alright, the approval of the minutes from our joint meeting that we had on April eleventh, you see anything on there that? For a motion to accept them. There makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
That was a second, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Carries, okay, council minutes from April seventeenth, any changes or corrections on that? For a motion to accept that there are no changes.
To the city council meeting minutes from seventeen.
Okay, now we make some motion, can I get a second?
A second.
Definitely was a second, alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, alright, public comment, anybody got anything you wanna chit chat about tonight?
I do, Bill Nelson, Chepna Drive two forty-nine, I realize that you're flushing water lines and low pressure, but where's the responsibility lie when they open the valve too fast? And you have significant damage in several people's homes.
What happened?
Yeah, you got.
On a, on Wednesday, at about ten AM. It blew the filter off one of my neighbors, it blew the head off of my water softener. Water was gushing out at a tremendous rate, if my wife hadn't been home and turned off the water, it would have been much, much worse. Same thing with my neighbor, he happened to go down and shut off his water. I just had my water softener replaced today, and the head is basically sheared off. Uh, I'm not the only, only homeowner, the Bernies was, has replaced several filters, lines, things like that from Wednesday's significant burst. When I called the city, when this went on, I spoke to a Mike, he assured me that there was nothing being done in the city, which is false. I asked if somebody could return my call, they said absolutely, and it is now Monday and I have not heard of work. And so I want, I wanna know where this responsibility falls, when obviously, somebody messed up when they turned that valve back on.
Jim, you care to, I mean, anything on that with the?
Well, I've just been briefed a little bit from public works as to what was going on at that time, obviously KPH were working too at that same time as that. The city go around and check valves, make sure all the options turn back on or turned off, or document which one, which way. Um, I don't know if there's a definitive answer as to what happened there yet, but, um, I think where we're at is data gathering and performance, if we did that damage build in your neighbors. Like that, um, there's a pretty good chance that it'll get turned over to the KPH if there's a valve or something that wasn't, wasn't opened, but. I'm kind of in this data discovery mode, just trying to figure out what, what conditions were occurring there.
And I can understand that, but at the same time, I know that this has happened all, all times before.
One other time, yeah.
And, you know, my question is, do we all need to invest in pressure relief valves because the supervision of these valves being turned on is not being done that it can be? And then who do we contact? That information should be put out, just like your notice on, uh, saying the water is gonna be low pressure. And then the third thing is, is why doesn't somebody respond when a homeowner calls? And this is not my first incident with the city where they just failed to call back, and there's a couple of you that have, and I appreciate that. But when you make a general comment and a call to the city, and they just basically ignore it. And I, and I will speak on behalf of specific people, but they have the same issue with this, where they were told it's not our problem.
How many calls did we get?
This is the first time hearing of this, so. Me too, sir, I wanted to go a little more, but one for.
Oh, Jim kinda highlighted what, if they're turned on, we got just a handful of calls, I don't know exactly how many they passed.
Started when?
Would have been last Wednesday, it would have been Wednesday, however, that's typically an area that is turned over to insurance for review or issues, and we have KPH working on. Water lines, at the same time, you're flushing, and, um, that's, that's where this happened.
So we don't know if it's related to the flush or to the working on the water?
And we're asking to go to insurance, we're asking to, because typically, if something has clean.
Yeah.
For anything, like, you know, damage to your car, damage to your house around, and flushing, or anything like this, things like that, it gets turned over to insurance, insurance reviews it. And they make a determination, or in this case, where we have a contractor working too, it's typically turned over to the contractor, contractor, the insurance is supposed to address it. And then it just, they say, oh, it's the cities, and they goes to Northwood Insurance, because they're, they're equal to it.
So, it's gonna take them for, to get any answers?
I'm, I'm curious, a couple things, so, there needs to be an investigation because, to be fair, we don't know what this is related to, now. Um, we can speculate all day, but until there's an actual investigation, we need that to determine that. At that point in time, yes, I agree, it's turned over to insurance, that is a process, I won't leave that. Um, so that being said, once we determine, then we can answer your question as to who's at fault, and what's the liability and accountability. If there was no work going on at your house, and this is no fault of your own, I can assure you that that will come up through the investigation, and then you will take the proper steps. Um, which might just be back to the same thing you call?
In the right.
Is that my?
How many homes?
That's what I was gonna ask, what extent, how many homes do you know of?
I know, I know, I know of three. It, it just off the top of my head, I have probably about five thousand dollars, it's high, that I bought out of pocket right now, just from damage to my home. Had my wife not turned off the water within five minutes of this happening, it would have been significantly worse. Now, granted, you can say, well, file your own insurance, well, so be it, I'm a smart insurance guy, I have ten thousand dollar deductible, so I'm just gonna pay it out of my pocket, but, uh, I have two issues. One is that the failure to communicate back to me, and the second thing is, is that, and being told that it's not, it's not the city's responsibility.
Number one, two questions, when you said that no one got back to you, was this since last Wednesday?
Since last Wednesday.
You have not heard a phone from anyone here or in the city since last Wednesday, effective as of this moment?
Correct.
Okay, that's number one, we're gonna address that.
Yeah.
Number two, um, failure to notify, is that what I'm hearing correctly, of a low pressure situation, or?
No, that was, I said that, I asked that, you're notifying people of a low pressure situation going on, but there should also be. If you're going to file a claim and know how many people were affected by this, then you should have notification to homeowners, who else is affected by it. Because there's a lot of us that are just, uh, saying, well, this, it's gonna fall back on us anyways, so why waste our time, and?
But we do need to be aware of that, who else, who else got involved here, we just know of you right now, and you said a few others, we don't, so, Aaron, you had a comment?
We did have a fire alarm activation at the school at that exact time, and you were under the impression that there was like a water hammer that had happened somewhere along the line. And so a pipe had started leaking on the wireline, so at the school, they also had this, something happen.
So the school was damaged too, is what you're saying?
So I'm not exactly sure what, but it was at that same time, that, just after ten o'clock.
So that's, I mean, we gotta find out who else got affected by this first, so we can kinda get, cause that's, otherwise, we're not gonna know, this will help the investigation to find out who else. Maybe we need to put something out on the, on the city site, the Facebook.
On the, on the Facebook page.
Do you have pictures and still the old water softener?
I have the water softener, and if you wanna see a picture of the head, I'll show that to you, but it basically shared that.
I believe you, I just make sure you have pictures. Right. Right.
What, what I could, Bill, I could follow up with you, you know, I followed up with you for different issues, we've had, I'll have space with you tomorrow, let's say here, or ask your own.
Yeah, I know, notify my other, the people that I know of, but at the same time.
But this may have happened in other areas too, and that's what we gotta try and find out, so we know where this might be, if it's isolated to a certain area, or if it was a bigger area, we just haven't been told about it. So, I didn't know about the school issue, so.
Who should our city point person be then for these individuals, Brenton, you, or?
I'll, I'll, I'll call you, Bill.
Okay, okay.
I work with a lot of different areas, just suggesting, we brought it, we could, for a hundred and times, for different issues, so.
But I think we should get some. Coordinate with Paul, and we'll come up with some messaging, get on our Facebook, so that people can get ahold of you if they have written anything last Wednesday on that.
And there's probably more than you think, because one individual had a snapshot of a number that they're supposed to contact KPH directly, because it's not the city's responsibility.
And typically, when somebody does have a claim or anything like that, we do need to turn it over insurance wise, and let the insurance companies review these situations, because that's what you pay insurance for.
Oh, I understand, I understand the whole insurance thing, but we really do need to be communicating with these residents, because I don't think it's fair. That they don't get phone calls, and we're just off doing whatever we want during the day, and I'm not trying to make you guys feel terrible right now, but I'm just saying, like, as a resident myself, it's very disappointing.
Okay. Anybody else have anything you wanna talk about?
Would you like to mention the Wall Street project again? In the years past, they've waited until midsummer to do something about the dust, it went from being blighted, it's already the dust doing all this. You guys, you better get on, now, get a plan to get them to do something about it, safety, because some ways you're gonna end up out of an accident.
Yeah.
The dust is very damaging, I mean, it just dried out. A week ago, it was a mud bath, with everybody going five miles an hour because of the frost, you know, but just, it's understandable, stuff happens, but it's all, it's all concern with the dust that's out there.
Right, then we also have the other thing, that whenever it rains or gets moist out there, when we put that stuff down, that's when the road goes back to its, what it was doing there at that one point, where we have pots and holes all over the place, so I mean, understand that too. No argument there, but.
The city's gotta spend some money on maintaining itself, the situation itself, it's not the residents' fault, it's the city's fault, it's such a mess.
Right, but I don't wanna make the road worse either, we have to balance this a little bit too, so, but yeah, I think we'll, we can have some more discussion about it, no problem with that.
Just wanted to bring it up, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright, anybody else? Okay, go on, Sheriff's Report, that'll be next time. Alright, Lucas, you got number nine?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this first, uh, project we're gonna discuss, we will, I have one is, uh, East Side, Rivers, that storm in street, district number is twenty-two-two-three. Uh, as the council may, uh, may not know, there are still some remaining properties that, uh, the city have been unable to reach the agreement with property owners, so the city, uh, recommendation, um, legal is to now, uh, take the next steps to, uh, go through the eminent domain proceeding, the quick take proceedings, to try to acquire the property interest that the city, uh, needs to disrupt this project. Uh, as part of your, um, motion or discussion, uh, with these resolutions that are gonna ask the council to approve tonight, would also be to, um, delay filing the just compensation until May tenth. Uh, we're gonna give us property owners an additional, uh, ten days to accept the city's final offer that it previously approved. So the first, um, I'll go over all documents, Mr. Mayor, and then I can have a larger discussion on, on each one, but the first one is, uh, the resolution of necessity. And what this resolution is doing is just saying that the city needs the property that's contained within the certificates of survey that interstate prepared, um, for the property owners that have still home now. Uh, what we're gonna do is, the city will be acquiring a permanent easement, um, of those properties, we're not gonna do it in T title, uh, and that is, will allow the city to, uh, go through the quick take proceedings. So the resolution of necessity, all it says is, the city has established this project, the city needs this right of way, uh, to disrupt the project, and it just lists, um, as an exhibit, those property owners that's, uh, still have property. So for the first resolution of necessity, it'll be for, uh, Bobby Bowers property, Megan and Kevin Nelson, uh, and Dale Woodhalls. So that's the resolution of necessity, there's also resolutions of offer to purchase for those property owners, and there's a separate resolution of offer to purchase for each property yard, uh, in that resolution of necessity. So the, the three resolutions of offer to purchase, uh, contain the highest value that the city had previously approved, uh, that's when we discussed the ten percent, the fifteen hundred, or the step up. So what we did is, we used the, uh, highest value in the resolution of offer to purchase, so what you're doing with those individual residents is saying, this is what the city needs to be, uh, just compensation, and that dollar amount will then get filed with the district board, along with the resolution of necessity, saying that's what the property, uh, is that the city is acquiring. So those are the, the documents, so for this first one, um, we have the resolution of necessity, and then we have resolution, uh, of offer to purchase for Oliver Nelson and Woodhalls. Any questions on the resolution of necessity, or the resolution of offer to purchase?
I'm curious why we're going here with the highest number on the resolution of offer to purchase, for those that's not agreed?
We had this discussion, uh, in our office, and felt like that was the best starting point, it was likely to judge or jury was gonna look at, um, the last number that was utilized by the city.
Okay.
And so to try to show that the city has gone this much higher than what the appraisal started at, we certainly argue at such time, that this, I mean, if this other court trial, argue that, hey, the city started here, and we got all the way up to, to the value that we did. So that's what we felt, that is best, just start with a higher value, and if need be, we'll argue that, argue for the appraised value later on.
That's fair, I just wanted them understanding the thought.
Yeah, and then, we had the discussion, and that's what it felt was.
I agree. Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions? People do these separately, now, if there's no other questions on us, I'm gonna look for a motion to accept the resolution of necessity.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion, can you get a second?
Also add the garbage to delay the dust.
We'll do that in the next one.
That's, still, okay, can I get a second on the resolution of necessity?
All second, yeah.
Second, sir, alright, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries, who to be for motion?
So, so for this one, again, if the, um, city in this motion is using the highest value, and then directing our, our office to deposit, uh, the funds and, uh, file the resolution on May tenth.
Okay.
I'll go up to the motion for the resolution, the offer to purchase, with the stipulation to delay the just compensation till May tenth.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
I got.
Second, okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Lucas, I just have one follow-up question, with, with the delay of that letter till May tenth, what is the communication to the residents now, between now and May tenth?
So we previously sent a letter to all the residents, informing them of their rights under Northwood's eminent domain laws.
Okay.
Uh, and so, I do want to communicate with them again, to let them know that they do have until May tenth, obviously, it's best for both parties, we can come to an agreement, uh, without having to go to trial on any of these. Um, so likely, we will be communicating with the remaining property owners again, to say that, um, the city has since approved, uh, these documents, it depends on filing at May tenth.
Yeah.
And we'll try to still work with the property owners to get these things done.
Yep, and that's what I'd like to see, I just wanna make sure that, that we are reaching out to them again, so they can understand.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on to ten. Lucas, you got that one too?
Yes, so, uh, same song and dance for ten, the resolution of necessity, um, for this one. It, the properties that are included, uh, are Brandon Rebecca, Coney, Linda Pittinger, Kim and Frances Snellgrove, Michael Snellgrove, uh, and Justin and Brandy Wallace. So the resolution of necessity is, again, referencing their properties, includes a legal description of the, uh, permanent easement that required by the city, as an, uh, exhibit to that one. And, uh, there's also the resolutions of offer purchase for each one of those property owners, so there's, uh, five of those.
Who's the first name again?
First one?
Yep.
Grant, Rebecca, Coney.
So there's five properties?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you go down. Well, so we're gonna get to yours, um, with the purchase agreements.
Okay.
And I, I haven't heard back from you, but. Correct, I think, uh, Mike emailed you today, the, the next thing on ours was, uh, that's a good time, probably, if they were to discuss this, uh, Mr. Cruz, he had responded to the city, saying that he accepted the city's offer, uh, to purchase the right of way and the trees, but on condition that, uh, that maintenance street fence be included. Uh, the city council did not approve the maintenance street fence, but, uh, approved the purchase agreement, so, uh, my thought was, have the city council approve the purchase agreement, send it to you, uh, and if you wanted to accept the city's, um, highest offer, that's what it would be, is, is still maintaining that, that offer, but not including the six-foot maintenance street fence. And the reasoning for that is the city's not paying for anyone else's, uh, fence, or for anyone else to have the fence, and, uh.
Didn't you know you paid for the one out in the development, in North River?
Uh, I don't know, the.
Yeah, there's a fence on the.
Yeah, they, they paid for that through assessments, if I'm not mistaken, that's not a good. And the city council thought too, is, uh, say, compensating for trees, the trees are supposed to be the, uh, security for that, or the.
What I did, the value difference between the fence and, uh, what I thought the trees were, so I figured if you were looking for a fence, then it was getting close to being compensated correctly for those bushes, because. But they're paying me for those bushes, I've done some checking, but what I understand, I mean, figured on six-foot live off trees, is what they priced mine, you guys must need to take a drink, because, because my live offs are over ten feet tall.
So, so what my office did is, we contacted three nurseries in that area, and asked them for, uh, what they were charging for a live life bush, and we just averaged the tree costs. We went for the tall, six-foot live, we went for the tallest dock that they had.
Right, that's it, because once there's, maybe it's my, can't rent it.
Yeah, and so that's the, the value that the city actually used for all its trees, for the, was the average of three nurseries, uh, using the tall dock that they have available, so that's the value that was used.
Well. I'll discuss it with my wife, just to be fair, that, right, unless, unless you guys want the compensate, or just up your dollar amount, for what the fence will cost to meet a building in, and make sure that I have even permission to put it on. Part of the reason I want the fence is, I don't want it over on where my property line is, I want right next to that walkway, where it should be. So that there isn't thirty, ten or twelve feet green space that doesn't need care for the property, and then my property, I want it right next to the walkway there, and then I would take care, and I would sign legal documents, that I would take care of. The part that you, that I technically no longer own, but on my yard side of the fence, I'd be wanting to maintain the, the asphalt establishment, I would go up to my side of the fence. And what we got to put up with, for what we've gone through on Wall Street, to the road emissions and stuff, being that road was never paved, when that. Old edition was made, started out there, but should have been paved road, I mean, they didn't go east, why they did go west? I know it was a township road, they lean on that, but there's ways to, to check it. So, you might want to give consideration, and check on what it cost to the fence was, and add that to my dollar amount.
This, this is obviously as high as, as it's gonna go, and I, I'll say that, that's the, what we said to all the other.
Well, I'll probably, what we said to all the other property owners, so we'll just have to proceed, as we've done with everyone else, then.
Okay. It's not, we can't come to an agreement, but it is what it is. So, resolution of necessity, for now, we're gonna have to do separate proceedings, um, for this individual, going forward, but, so the, the documents we have now, we'll have to send him, uh, a letter, informing him of this, right, something, of those eminent domain laws, and, um, the same process, so. Uh, a letter informing him on this, right, something of those eminent domain laws and then um this same process, so. Um, just know that the resolution of necessity now just includes the, the properties that the previously referenced. Uh, so again, Grant, Rebecca, Coney, Linda Pittinger, Kim and Francis Snellgrove, Michael Snellgrove. And Justin and Brandy Wallace. Go on, take action on that one.
Do we have any questions on the resolution of necessity? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to accept the resolution of necessity. Makes a motion, can I get a second? Terrible, the second, alright. All in favor say aye. Okay, motion carries. And then we have the resolution.
Yeah, so the resolutions of offer purchase, again, we went with the highest value. Uh, and for the same property owners and then also would be to uh file the deposit on May tenth.
Are you also going to offer them the delay?
Yeah, let me tell you. Let's just file on May tenth.
Okay, any questions on that? Otherwise I'm looking for a motion to accept. Make that motion. Jeff makes a motion, can we get a second? Okay, and we does a second. All in favor say aye. Right, and then the C portion here is to approve the purchase agreements that we've got.
So this will be approved purchase agreement, it's hopeful that it would be two, um obviously it's just one video one. So the old ones uh accepted today, so they accepted the city's uh I offered. Um, so I told them that I would present that to the council tonight, so. Google up the old ones versus.
Make that motion.
Okay, let me make some motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Stephanie does a second, alright, all in favor say aye. Motion carries, alright. Moving on to eleven, Jim.
Mr. Mayor Council, um bids were received by the North Port Department Transportation, bringing the shared use path phase three, which is the north. East corner of the round block, northeast leg of the round block, seventy-six avenue north. And the uh Center Avenue Multi-Ball Improvement, see retired projects by the DOT, which means they've bid together, so one contractor can get hold of them since. The city is the sponsor for both of those projects. Uh, bids were received on Thursday, April fourteenth, the DOT received bids from two contractors off construction of Grand Forks and Northern Improvement. Fargo, um up was the low bidder with a bid of five hundred twenty-six thousand one hundred seventy dollars. Uh, the insurance has been through the project equals five hundred forty thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollars, so it's a good bid when it came to that. Um, this is a federally funded project, so the local share uh for two um. Journeys Bath is more eighty-seven thousand dollars and for the Center Avenue about fourteen thousand, those are estimates because they're percentages based on what the total cost. Is at the S, so um my recommendation would be to award project of, of construction, done some. Work in town before, most of it's been subcontractor work, but uh they did a good job on the uh concrete repair out here. And they did some work around outside of the very driveway and the curb and others, so. They have the capability to do it, but this project is less than the threshold for the uh policy there policy, so. They'll need that on here and they have passed the uh. This event, the DVE and from all the requirements, this state requires for the project, so.
Can you just describe again a little bit vis, a little more visually, what, what parts we're talking about in, in addition to the. I mean, the new walking uh multi-use, yeah.
Or by the shore units.
Okay.
Put that on the opposite side of the road of north of the round block.
Okay.
So it will be a ten foot wide concrete path. From the northeast leg of the round block.
Third, seventy-third, okay.
Up to there. And then for the Center Avenue, there's some striping that has to down here, there's no real pedestrian facilities around the RV center, for the senior center. And there's a curb under the, the line eight, lots of water on that curve of the parking lot. And some colored concrete around there too, just as it happens of the radiator.
Okay.
So, any other questions? Otherwise I'm looking for a motion to accept the bids.
I'll second.
Stephanie. Right, all in favor say aye. Go on to twelve, Jim, what you got?
Uh, law service seven station, through the time of that project, we did, there's a portion of that project that was uh within the. Right of way or the easements of the train twenty-seven that needed USR Corps of Engineers permit. Um, at that time, the government was going short on money, so they were reviewing permits and it was all timely managed. Contractor came in, got the work done, of course, didn't have, the permit wasn't done approved by the, by the Corps yet, so um. If we had discussions with him, going to bidding the, bidding the uh, work, it's not a lot of work. Along with the version or contractor proposal, maybe buying the equipment and hiring somebody for it in. Ultimately, they said they'd come back and they put it all the work in, or for all the uh storms who are piping in. Um, add bid price with just a fourteen thousand dollar, golden people fees, since their equipment was already there and they're letting it go, and so. Um, we've gone through this, we've beat it up, go on to this, we could. We um talked with the developer, the developer would just rather see it done and. Will be done, and the fact that it's got that four, four permit or four, uh, four, four permit in there. And the city does have some liabilities in approving all those permits and, and um releasing those permits. It's best to do under the city contract with, with the city contractor versus trying to just. Have a piece of laying around, hire somebody to put in this pipe just right there and then. Plus it establishes the green, the grading along the green in the backyards of those parks.
Done, done, right?
Right, it's not done yet, we'll.
Okay, there will be an exception on this?
Yes.
Any other questions on this one? Otherwise I'm gonna look for a motion to accept a change order.
Make that motion.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye. Carries, waste management deal, Breton.
Have Mick of the air here from Waste Management, to talk about waste management and some potential. Uh, probably relevant adjustments or changes that they're looking at doing for us. Uh, Nick has been the point contact that I've been working with whenever people have concerns or issues with waste management. Air trade is recycled bins, uh miss services, anything like that. If their staff is on hold, their staff or reach out to them directly to express the issues or concerns, so. Um, you, I mean, I've talked, we can't hold it for times about uh. What issues are running across and he could expand on that a little bit more, or he'll expand on that quite a bit more probably. Um, but one issue is the rain out hours when people pick up trash, of course, it's grow, if they're growing. They have to comply with DOT dollars for picking up trash, they can't go over that, or they open themselves up to issues. So he elaborated about some of those different challenges he has. If you have any questions about waste management or services, anything like that.
Thank you, um, I appreciate your time, I won't take much of it, but uh. Boris, with the growth that you all are. We're looking at taking the town and shifting from a Tuesday service to a Wednesday service. In all of the east side of highway right here on Wednesday. And then obviously recycling, I really believe it. The Thursday service doing all of the west side, north of uh, or Wall Avenue North. Keeping the same, Wall Avenue South being the same, but that's where it looks for it. So each week there would be three trucks in town. Um, and, and what that does is on Tuesday right now, we have. Kindred service, we have forest service, then on Thursday, it's Horace and a couple other small areas. The issue that we're running into is on Thursday, we're running into. Not only the, like Brett said, the hours of service, my drivers are, are regulated to twelve hours of, of driving time. So what happens is they come to work at five AM, they have to be back at our shop at seventeen hundred. When that doesn't occur, if they're back after seventeen hundred, then I have to give them a forty-eight hour. So what we're running into, we're running into to miss service and that's what this relieves. So I no longer do any other service, I'm taking um the service from these other towns around, I'm shipping it. I no longer do any other service for another town for Wednesday with those three trucks. No other town for Thursday with those three, three trucks. I would lie to each and every person here if I said there's never gonna be another missed resident. There's never gonna be another hiccup, um. I have the entire state of North, right now, I did this very same thing. With a town very similar to the growth from the expansion that Horace is, is seeing right now. And we have not had another issue with that. So I firmly believe now with that, with all the residents, they're coming to do the two flyers. Um, in their, in their garbage can and in their recycling can, to just remind everybody. Um, that look on this day. Your service will leave Wednesday, your recycling day will be this day September. It's gonna be this day, September twelve, September twenty-fourth. So there's no, this communications is going. To give a little backstory, waste management, I came in July to this management. Since then, I have done completely total management turnover. I've gotten rid of every manager. Have all experience. On staff, they were all drivers and these location. Route manager that I have been part of was Horace's driver. Um. I have the most experienced residential driver on my entire staff, dedicated one hundred percent. Wednesday and Thursday to this location. The other towns, I'm gonna be upfront on this, the other towns I told, but this is, this is happening on. It was May first, this is happening May first, and. Here's your notification. Brent and I have a very good relationship, Brent is very easy to, he has no problem calling and, and um. Sometimes angry saying, this is the issue going on. And, and I appreciate that, so that communication. Can continue to get better in this community. I'm hoping any questions you may have.
Well, I'm just glad you're able to make it here tonight and have this conversation, because you know, it's obviously been an issue that we've been dealing with here for quite a while, so. Uh, coming forth with a solution is a good thing, I appreciate that.
Communication.
Yeah, when, when Nick has, when he announces the dates and changes and everything, I'll be having Paul work up. Some information from the city, so we can help stress that message. Um, we could do like a letter or fire. Or at least social media and on website, things like that too, so. We were planning on doing something once they have that all locked and announced, and I did ask Nick to. Yeah, well, a month notice, the people had time, that way they have time to be prepared. And to at least do our best.
Utility bill?
Yeah, with the utility bill, except you could do a letter or fire or something, uh so we have these a couple of different ways to work off. My biggest concern was making sure we had enough time. It wasn't just a sudden change.
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta let folks know. Any other, Al?
I have a side question. Park was quite recycling the last, are you guys gonna continue?
Yes, sir, we're, we're continuing as of right now. So the only reason, and I'm not gonna speculate on the other towns' issues, the only reason is because of. Cost of the transportation from Fargo to the outlying side of the back.
Okay, any other questions?
Appreciate the information, thank you.
Alright, so what would you like us to do here, uh, Breton?
Um, I, I guess I don't believe you guys need to have to take out it. More informed and I wanna make sure you have a deep neck. And know what they're putting in doing, what they're doing to drive through the services, because that's the ongoing challenge.
Okay, cool, alright, well, let's move on to fourteen.
Oh, really quick, sorry, I do want to, Nick has been the one I've been working with. Has that credit been processed, Nick?
Yes, sir.
So the next utility bill will be able to reflect the credit. We were folks for one week, this on the service, because of some of the different challenges we've had, waste management, they're looking to get that. Red, redemption, so folks will get five dollars roughly. It was from their bill, ballpark, a little bit, they create that ballpark. And we'll have that explanation in the bottom.
Go to fourteen.
You don't have access to your own information, good job.
I guess. That's pulling it up, so. So you have here is uh proposed budget amendment, budget amendment number one for our twenty twenty-three budget, this is just applicable to the forestry fund. Uh, the main reason driving this budget amendment is uh. When we developed the forestry fund budget last year, we didn't have the whole of our tree program established. We worked through their workings of it, we have that uh. Application fee where the first tree in the front of a yard, front of a house, on the boulevard is fifty dollars. Any others after that is two or fifty, but if it's a side yard, it's two fifty, we also broke it up for new homes, saving bill. Uh, or permitted. In twenty twenty-three and on, versus anything beforehand, we've all two different categories. Uh, either way, uh, we've been kicking off, we're developing our whole archery program, we've had fairly good interest from residents. Um, we have not taken any funds from residents yet on it, we wanna make sure we have the interest. Triple word trees, different things like that. However, this budget amendment is reflective mainly of interest that we've had. Two days for the whole entry program, we've had almost a hundred applicants, ninety-four uh to date. And approximately a hundred fifty trees that have requested through this program. Uh, so that's pretty darn good participation. Uh, so in a nutshell, what this budget amendment does. It recognizes the revenues, so the amendment is adding those revenues from that agency. Or, or from the, the residence cost share. In just, as revenue, and then showing those revenues, expenditures can go down in the second sheet. Um. Mainly in area, really in areas reflective of. It's mainly in reflective of the areas where we have to do equipment rental, so we're very hard to rent a reaper trailer. A refrigerator trailer, store those trees until we get planted. Uh, also a spade or. This gets here, brother of a sap wants to try to use a spade to see if that works, wanna test it out, we'd like to buy one, but why wait? About buying one until we know it works for us the right, you know, period. Um. And then in addition, it has the special project, project line item is increased, and the reason for that increase. Is because. Trees cost more, we have more interest than we interested, we have for these trees. So our costs are higher, so we need to reflect that in Boston there, so we can order these trees. Uh, if this budget amendment is approved tonight, we will be putting order in for trees tomorrow. By the time you add the trees and shipping everything, we're all kind of dollars for the trees and shipping is ballpark what we're looking at. Uh, trees. Uh, would be compatible with our tree origins, we went off our tree origins, we give people four choices, crab, elm, oak, or maple. And we're select trees that are in inventory with uh the wholesale nursery that we've been reaching out to, say one Fargo uses of Daleys. Uh, main reason we have used since, because Fargo has worked with them too, and we've priced different trees around the area, but these are. And we price different trees around the area, but these are bare root trees, can regain them a lot cheaper than what it would cost to get a tree that's like in the ball. Uh, bare trees, ballpark costs around fifty bucks. For the actual tree, then we have costs like mulch and dirt stains and sometimes different things like that, so.
Are you ordering five or ten percent extra if something's damaged?
Yeah, we would order some extras, that way if we do have damage, uh, if we do have extras after that order. Then we do have out the area that's in town where we can put out much of bollard and like street right way and we'll chase the to. To public facilities or the public space. Uh, it could be something where we might be as a work for the park district, or we could use it down by like our little site. That area, we put some trees on that area too. Uh, but based on the interest that we've had, I don't think we'll have a problem getting rid of the trees, it'll be a. Aiming at the ground as quick as we can.
So just kind of, so these are bare root, which is. And the shelf life of those is a lot less than a root ball.
That's why you need the refrigerator trailer.
Understood.
Trailer, um, that gives us more time. Uh, we've solved with our neighboring cities and have dropped feedback from our neighbors. Uh, with bare trees, people take and establish a lot of everything, have their lot with bare trees, so they have.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Yeah, you, why is the city planting trees? Why shouldn't that be left up to the home?
That was the structure within our bollard tree program, and to ensure that they get planted in the ballpark. Uh, because if we did that tree, our concern was to get the tree just to the resident, here you go, plant it. Is it really bringing it up into the ballpark? So we want to make sure those trees get the ballpark.
Seems like an awfully, awfully big expense to me.
Well, I'm, I guess I was under the impression this program. I guess I was under the impression that we would just like pick it. Have a designated day with whoever has these trees, whoever ordered the trees. You'd be prepared, go to the nursery, get your trees today before, and then. Pop them in the next day. I had no idea that we were gonna be storing. Bunch of trees.
I was under the assumption they were a potted tree, because they were gonna use like a drill and just zip them in.
Here a tree is cheaper than a pot tree.
And when you say a, a tree spade, again, forgive me, my question, are we? Are we talking a post hole digger? Because we talked about a post hole digger, what, what is a tree spade versus like a post hole digger?
Yeah, there is like a post hole, they're kind of like an auger, you get.
Right, that's a spade.
Uh, no, the spade is like, you see the tree trucks that have like the four.
Do we need something, we're forgetting bare root trees? I can't, we just do, I think we should just, I mean, maybe it's cheaper, we should just do a post hole digger.
And what we're wanting to do is try this approach and see if that works. You can rent an auger, post hole diggers taking smaller hole.
Right, but they're, they're small trees, right?
Uh, but our buddy works that, was asking me to use a.
I was just gonna ask, how big are these trees if they're bare root?
Uh, these trees are around inch and a half, yeah, we're trees.
Inch and a half in diameter?
I guess I, I guess I don't know the rental cost differential between these.
So, reaper truck is around five hundred dollars. So we wanna make sure that we coordinate, get these trees in the ground as quick as possible. And that way you can cut down on the amount of time that you have to get out.
The public works is gonna have the amount of time to get this done? That's my, my biggest question.
Pushing coordination. There's a project we've been talking about, public works. If we were to have somebody else go plant a tree, your costs are gonna be a little higher.
Maybe it's.
You're talking a tree, if we plant it, if we use the bare rep approach, all those different things, or have a contract to do it. Your costs are gonna be a lot higher on a real project to monitor using around four or five hundred dollars a tree. But things got you out. Probably deliver it in a sixty-six tree, for example, there are a tree in there. About five, six months.
So when you say you want to get a, rent a refrigerator trailer and store them, like how long is that for?
So they get the trees in, they're located, you know, as quick as possible. If it's, it's a weekly rental, five hundred dollars a week.
So are you like doing like a self-schedule then? Or?
When we would have.
That you guys just knock them all out or?
We would have the delivery date set. We'd be backtracking to clear and making sure that we have what we're done, like definitely where the trees go. And it's, it would be a coordination of that person.
It wouldn't take.
It would have to be coordination, but then, and we have our staff that's working towards that.
Point of brass points, I was able to order, not just have order, which makes order. And plant and move by hand. And on the trees, we might back down like half a day. Realistically. I mean, worst case, it's just like two hundred trees requested, guided by ten last days. That's in a half a day, with that many guys, if they got two guys going on.
Our challenge is if they're treating, you have to be glad where there's utilities and they can't run the spade.